Yeah, yeah. We're planning to get down. So I just have to update you.
Do a pledge of allegiance.
6th July of the United States of America. Interelect for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, welcome to the school community meeting being reported by Westwood Media. If anyone else wished to report tonight, say nothing. Okay, great. The first item on the agenda is superintendent's report.
Thank you. So I'm just going to give you a quick update of where we are in the FY '21 budget process. So the Budget Steering Committee met again last week when we were checking in about a number of items. But specifically, I want to call to your attention, we talked about the district's additional capital request. So this is a request that's above and beyond sort of the typical annual capital budget. And as you know from our prior conversations, we're really looking for some funding in two areas. One is to complete the second phase of two phases for the Thurston HVAC project. And we estimate that it will be about $150,000 to finish out that project. And then we've also requested an additional $150,000 to continue our security-related projects, related to our security audit. So Lema's been working with Pam on that request. And I just wanted you to know that Pam's going to be taking that to the Select Board's discussion on this Monday, I think. This week, yeah, next week on Monday. She'll be discussing that potential additional capital article. And then in terms of our own budget process internally, those of us in the central office, Lema and I, we've met with all of the cost center leaders and compiled all of the budget requests. And not surprisingly, the requests, I would say significantly exceed what we think we will reasonably be able to propose on a board. The district leadership team, the principals and all the central office folks actually took advantage of our snow day last week. And we met for several hours as a team to begin the process of looking at those requests, establishing our pre-K to 12 priorities and start to winnow the list. So I just thought I'd foreshadow for you, there are a few issues or themes that are emerging. I think you'll see reflected next month in the proposed budget. The good news is that the district enrollment for next year is predictably relatively stable. So when we're thinking about staffing in general education classrooms, we're not anticipating significant swings at any level of the district. And we think staffing is probably adequate in terms of class sizes at all levels. In terms of general education programming, our focus area is middle school ELA. And that priority's really been identified through Mr. Redmond's entry process, through the ELA curriculum review that you'll hear about, and for, I'm guessing, analysis. So that's the place that we're focusing. Some challenging issues, so we're taking a hard look at some emerging needs and trends related to SEL and special education. And we think there's some things that have those short and long-term implications for the budget. So we're thinking about that a lot. And then finally, and it's great, we have Lema with us for the first time in this role, going through the budget process. And so we're taking this opportunity to take a deep look at some structural issues in the budget. You know, really thinking about how do we think about turnover? How do we think about budgeting offsets and the use of offsets from our user fees? And kind of the level of risk that we're comfortable budgeting around in terms of things like special education tuition. So we're having some good conversations and we'll want to talk more with you about them. So a lot to think about. And related to that, I had to go over to Tony to see if there might be some interest in doing like a maybe a one-hour training for the school committee related to special education issues. And you know, of course, as we talk a lot about special education, and it just might be helpful to, you know, make sure everybody's on the same page about some issues in special education. I think it would inform our budget discussion.
Oh, that's all right.
All normal, right? We're not taking help.
We're not, we're not evacuating.
Has face to face too, exactly, ready to. So I thought I could see, if you're interested in John, could maybe figure out a time when we could do that. Maybe during the board's meeting. And then just lastly, you like, we saw the news that Massachusetts really recently passed a specific bill related to public school funding, Student Opportunity Act. And it really is a pretty monumental piece of legislation. In terms of what it means for us, I mean, the objective is to increase funding for among the schools by about one and a half billion dollars rolled out within the next seven years. So it's a big deal. It's really designed to address inequities in our school funding. And it redoes the formula of foundations formula. And it looks at some outdated assumptions from the formula. The formula came out in 1993. And there's sort of a recognition that the formula doesn't reflect the realities of what it costs to educate students. So I, bottom line, I mean, I think that we will benefit from it. Every district is going to benefit from it. I don't think it's going to be life-changing for us, but we think it will be for some people. So we'll be getting some of this looked at for seven weeks. I think we're going to be beginning what a magnitude to more than thirty hours a year. What might be significant is that they have now decided to include transportation in the circuit breakers. It's a big deal. Up to this point, it's just intuition. And so we'll talk about that, we'll see how that works for us. That could be good.
And that's the big piece, right? Sometimes it's more than two years.
Kids do all.
With, between '20 and '23?
What I heard said it's going to be a phase of, so we're going to get back to the one necessarily financially or funding in a certain way.
Voice is joking.
There are some people who would like ours.
So that's that.
Good, thank you. All right, good. Moving along, we are now going to have a discussion of the English Language Arts Curriculum recommendations.
And I'm going to kick us off here tonight. We have, I want to thank you all for giving us a few minutes of what I think was very precious time this fall, given how much time and attention you all are spending on the building project. And we're getting up for budget season, so I know it's a lot of work. We're going to, we're going to keep it brief. You've already gotten the draft report and the full recommendation. So we're just doing, this is like the highlight reel. This is just a few bullets about the things that really rose to the top of conversation. And then time for you to ask questions. And if we don't have time for you to get into a lot of questions tonight, we still have some next time before we bounce back to us at our next meeting, okay? I wanted to start with just a couple introductions and sharing our vision statements. I, our committee this time had really wide representation. It was a fantastic group. And I was also really happy to have our leadership team that kind of helped drive the work. I wanted to introduce them. They're going to talk about the different level recommendations. So Marcia Ratsky is our elementary, both English Language Arts and Social Studies coordinator. She's wearing both hats. Similarly, Marissa Olivoe, our new Humanities Department head for middle school. So she's staffed in English and Social Studies, leadership at the middle school. We're excited to have her. She's new to the district, in a new position this year. And Kate Holmes, our high school English department chair, is going to help out tonight. They each have one slide, so I'll just keep it real short. I did want to begin with vision statement, just because it was a group of English teachers in the room. It took us a while to come up with agreement about words, as you can imagine. And I think that it ended up being very thoughtful and kind of whole thinking. And a vision statement's really supposed to capture what do we want to see when we look at the impact of our instruction in English Language Arts. So, and it reads like this. "Students in the Westwood Public Schools are curious readers, critical thinkers, careful researchers, thoughtful listeners, effective writers, and powerful speakers. They explore, question, and analyze texts that represent diverse voices and experiences. They collaborate to share insights and discover new ideas. They speak and write to shape their lives, their communities, and their world. They use their developing skills to inform, persuade, create, and inspire." That's what we're going for. So they are pretty ambitious in terms of what we're hoping to pull off. I'm going to hand it off to Marcia to talk a little bit about sort of the big highlights from K to 12.
Good evening, everybody. Can you hear me? I'll try to. Well, the first, these are the big three highlights for elementary. We're going to adopt and implement units of study, both in reading and writing. There's four core units that address the different genres of reading and writing, narrative, nonfiction, and persuasive. And that would be a K to 5 rollout with four units of study, both reading and writing and all those abilities. We're going to be pursuing interdisciplinary opportunities. These units of study, and I'll jive us with the third one. They build flexibility into the classroom schedule because the units really focus on strategies in what strongly yours do and what strongly others do. We really are using reading and writing as a tool to look at content area, social studies, and science, which in turn will build flexibility into the schedule for the elementary teachers. And so being in my dual role of social studies and ELA, it really provides that connectivity of both levels of content and data.
How I realize. So Thurston.
Hi, everyone, I'm Marissa again. Nice to see you. I'm glad to be here. I think the first bullet kind of necessitates the, like, when we work really hard on analyzing or like curriculum alignment, I think the rest of the things kind of will flow out of that. So we found in the review that we, our curriculum wasn't aligned six to eight as much as it might be. And we've already started looking at, looking at a curriculum outline. And then there are some dips in our performance in a couple different ways, both internally and in standardized tests. And we want to take a close-up of that. And there's a lot of, you know, it's not a surprise to me as a new person that intervention, the intervention model of finding, plays something we want to work on. So, and then just idea of workshop-style lessons. You know, learning something right up front, practicing it, practicing again, is something that we want to be sure that we work on. So I think that the biggest plus of the findings is that my role is kind of by design meant to facilitate much of these findings. So it seems reasonable that we can expect that this will happen because there's a person in, like, sort of in charge of facilitating that. So I think that's a pretty good, pretty good thing for our school.
It was nice, we got out in front of that even before the review happened. So I appreciate Mike putting that on the table last year. Yeah, but high school.
So historically speaking, the high school, we've done a lot of synthesis writing, which is analysis with multiple sources, which is wonderful. But what we want to now do is diversify our writing. We want to have our students keeping synthesis, but also persuasive writing, narrative writing, analysis of single sources. So they're really prepared to write for a variety of reasons and a variety of audiences. In order to really get the students the best feedback possible, we'll also be adopting our rubrics. As we change our writing, the rubrics need to change so they get the feedback they need to really improve their writing, as that's what they have. And finally, we want to weave in more student choice. We want to have students have choice with what they read and what they do with that reading, whether it's what topic they'll write about, how they'll write, or even create for their assessments.
And there were these themes that kind of were consistently coming out of all levels. And so these are things that are really district-wide focal points. One was really the need to diversify both our core classroom text, text that all students in a class might read together, like a mentor text in elementary or a class-wide text at the middle or high school, as well as optional text. There's this notion that kids need to be able to see themselves and see the wider world in all its sort of richness in the work that they read. And that's really what we're going for. And so we want to, you know, and I think it gets particularly interesting at the high school level, where the high school department has the challenge of balancing kind of, we want our kids exposed to classic literature. We want to make sure they continue to have that, those things that have stood the test of time. But we also need new voices in the mix too. And that's really important. We talked about identifying opportunities to teach these other skills. Our English classes tend to focus very heavily on reading and writing. Listening and speaking are really part of the English Language Arts standards in a big way. And we felt like we needed to highlight that and look at where those, that instruction is happening and make sure it's happening consistently, grade level to grade level, as well as taking better advantage of the opportunities to work on SEL competencies within English class. Often, literature is a great springboard for helping kids think about social relationships and think about their own kind of problem-solving skills and so forth. So it's a, it's a good natural partnership, and we want to be able to kind of weave those together. This third one is kind of a fun one. We're talking about what do we do? Right now, a lot of our grammar and mechanics instruction is embedded in our study of text. So people kind of do it by pulling vocabulary and pulling structures from the text they're doing. But if you ask teachers, one of the things they consistently say is sometimes it's the thing that gets left till the end, or doesn't get enough time or consistent attention. And so what we're looking at is can we map out what do we need that trajectory to look like K to 12? The good news is our kids are actually doing really well when we assess them in these areas and when they are assessed independently in these areas. When you look at MCAT scores, we're doing fine on the development of these skills. So our kids are kind of soaking it up. But we feel like it would be easier for more kids if we did it more consistently.
So those are all for K to 12 development?
Yep.
Grammar, I get grammar.
Yeah.
Handwriting, K to 12?
Yeah, well, I think one of the things that's interesting that came out, the place where the handwriting issue comes up is AP, where the tests have to be handwritten. So we don't do the instruction necessarily at the high school level, but we need to think about where in our trajectory we're going to do instructions so that kids get enough exposure and practice, that they are holding on to enough handwriting skills that they can manage the AP test.
Are we teaching handwriting?
We're teaching print, not as much person. And our students are on the computer and briefly on. So handwriting is something that we've noticed has been kept up to par as we would like.
So does this mean we would add cursing back in?
We're just going to discuss that as a leadership team. We really see a need for the students to have the keyboarding skills.
Right.
It's a little bit of both. I mean, there's research that we're looking at around handwriting and handwriting's importance in note-taking. People just take better notes when they handwrite versus, and the notes are more useful. And so there is a balancing act where we're trying to shed a little bit of both. And we got to figure out what is that balance? But I feel like we can't just not do anything about it, nothing about it. I think we keep hearing about it is sort of what this is intended for.
Do other systems do handwriting? Do other systems have handwriting in the curriculum? Do you know?
Not so much anymore.
That's ridiculous. I see a problem across the board.
Just no one has a signature anymore.
That's true.
I'd say sort of finally, this is a little bit outside the control of this particular team or the curriculum instruction bucket. But this theme around schedule has come up consistently when we do curriculum review. Particularly at the secondary level, it's about the length of the blocks, the shorter blocks. And it gets really hard to do certain things. And so I think there's a real interest in the ELA committee felt strongly to at least sort of put it out there that English teachers would love to see longer blocks. And that was similar to science teachers when we talked to them years ago. At the elementary level, it's a little different. It's what Marcia referred to, just trying to find ways to integrate the schedule and provide more flexibility and make sure we're building in time that is developmentally appropriate for kids to have choice, to have play, to work on SEL, and to, you know, grow up into thoughtful people. So those are kind of the highlights at the district level, things that sort of resonated throughout the different levels. And then that kind of, you know, I wanted to end just by saying, the good news is this is an area where the district is doing really well broadly. I think kids are leaving Westwood High School and they continuously come back reporting feeling very well-prepared for whatever comes next in terms of literacy. And, you know, the goal of a strong literacy curriculum is empowerment. Language is a very powerful tool for helping impact your own life or impact the world. And we want to make sure that we continue to get better and better at this because it's important. It helps kids navigate the rest of their lives. So that's all from us in a very brief presentation, but we're here for questions, either tonight or in the future.
So this year, we're going through the recommendation development phase. And the idea is next year, we begin the implementation.
Implementation, exactly. And we have a sort of timeline that we've sketched out and drafted out. We're still going to digger a few things around there. But, you know, for example, the units of study that Marcia mentioned, they're really dense, kind of challenging, interesting curriculum. It's going to take a while for all teachers to get comfortable over time. That's probably a two- to three-year rollout process. The high school's sort of curriculum is pretty intact and they've done some front-loading, but they do have some kind of fine-tuning work to do around writing. And then the middle school, it's really kind of alignment and mapping work. And so we've gotten a good start there already. So I think, you know, I'd say a two- to three-year timeline before we really hit where we want to be.
Is that curriculum alignment or is it alignment or both?
It's both. It's both like classroom to classroom and kind of grade level to grade level. This group did look at things like the five to six kind of transition in a sense of wanting to make sure that sixth-grade teachers were aware of just how rigorous the working that was happening in fifth grade was. And we've started doing some of that.
Do we have some pay dates specifically targeting?
We will next year typically.
Aligning and making sure that, because we've talked about this before.
Yeah.
And we begin at the elementary level this year. With all the grade levels, we begin that this year at elementary level for both reading and writing.
And we've also done some vertical work. So our sixth-grade teaching team went to see the fifth-grade teacher, Yvonne Lee, and I think walked back up with a much clearer understanding of what kids were doing in fifth grade.
Good, thank you.
I just, we've talked over the years about getting feedback from our graduates on what they felt well-prepared for, and I'd love to have this sometime. When we start to do that, and start to get that feedback from the English majors, anthropology majors, that would be valuable. And I'm just interested in, I was very unprepared going to college. And it did do 300-word essays every single night. And if you did well, you moved. If not, you'd get thrown over. And I never had written that much on different topics and all that. I just, gee, I just wished, you know, just that kind of preparation. Is there, how often do the kids write, you know, critically? How often? What kind of feedback do they get? You know, because I think to me, that is a very valuable exercise, just to do a lot of essays, different topics, different positions. I want you to argue this point. And is that a part of this program?
Absolutely. So I think it's incredibly important that the students are writing all the time. Most of our students write almost every day. And we're process writing at the high school, so they're writing in steps and getting feedback every step of the way. We need to be able to have that time to meet with them and have them figure out how to make the argument stronger, how to do a deeper analysis. Because absolutely, we want them to leave feeling ready to write those 300-word essays all the time. So they are doing it frequently and we are meeting quite a bit. And we're actually now, we've moved for our mid-year exams in the English department are now conferences. So we have a special time during mid-years where we meet with every single student to look at their writing, look at what they've done so far, make a plan for the future, for the second half of the year. Beautiful thing about that being in the middle of the year is now we have all of this time to actualize what we've worked on together. So we're constantly tweaking to make that even better, but I think that we're definitely paying close attention to that.
Is there a process for maybe to catch kids who are creative writers? Poetry, I mean, you know, all of a sudden, just people write an argument for an essay on political science, but, you know, just picking off the kid that's imaginative and encouraging them and, you know, in those areas, if branch right off of just hard-to-go writing. Does that look far and encouraged?
Yes, so I would say that one of the big movements that we want to peel back some of the synthesis writing is because there wasn't a lot of opportunity for creative writing until the senior year where we have a creative writing course. So now we're weaving more of that back in, narrative writing and creative writing. Because all writing matters, and whatever sparks the kid's interest is where we want to follow and grow and help them develop. So our movement in this will absolutely bring in some more creativity for our students.
And public speaking part, is that, let me get up and speak in front of a microphone. Is there any feedback from kids like that Dale Carnegie course, as far as what they picked up on that and how that, you know, there's a lot going on there. They could be valuable in the classroom for large numbers of people. And, you know, that whole concept of public speaking, how do you get up? How do you prepare for the audience? Has all been built into this also?
So we actually have a public speaking requirement junior year. All of our juniors take public speaking, which is, it's great. So they get up there, it's one semester. They learn all different kinds of public speaking. Some of it's impromptu, which I think is great, so frequently we have to public speak impromptu. Or they plan for different audiences, different occasions. So it's right now a graduation requirement for all of our students. Additionally, there's public speaking in all of our English classrooms. It's so important.
So I'm going to, if you have any other questions where you fall offline, we've only got six minutes to get through, so.
Thank you, guys.
I want to thank everyone for your work, coming here tonight, but also for your work on the committee of state houses. And it was a lot of work. Great.
Okay, the next item is the second reading of the physical examination and public health screening students.
Yeah, so we had a discussion about it last month, and we made the change that we talked about last month. So there, in the first paragraph, you know, second paragraph, it had to do with advanced communication to parents. So we made that, we incorporated that change here for the second reading.
Yep.
Thank you, all right. So why don't we go through the action items? The first one is approval of the minutes for November 4, 2019. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion. For the second.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye, the voters in unanimous. The next item is the approval of the minutes for November 7, 2019. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Sure, yes.
Any discussion? All those in favor? The unanimous. All right, the next one is the vote to accept the gift of $800 from Martha Jones, PTO.
Yes, we're very appreciative. Martha Jones, PTO has provided funding to purchase a virtual reality sandbox for science lessons, which we have been licensing at some other schools. It's exciting.
Got to see it to understand it. If we can have the school committee into the same. We might have to take you guys on the road.
Do I have a motion to accept?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye, the voters in unanimous. The next is to...
You should also take it formally.
Yes.
Yes, we should.
We're here to.
Next, a vote to accept grants totaling $8,120 for the Foundation for Westwood Education.
We continue to appreciate their support as well. You can see the grants are listed here. So it's high school courageous conversations, $1,000, high school community conversations, something called cases of immigration for $800, Deerfield Sensory Pathways for $1,500, the Edna Ross Repractical coding for $1,900, preschool STEM enrichment for $1,900, and the high school musical SEL program for elementary schools for $1,000. So lots of folks represented here in the grant process.
Do I have a motion to accept the grants from Westwood Education? Second, second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Voting unanimous.
I'll move it forward.
Yes.
So the next one is the update on the school building committee membership. Just two things here before we do the vote. One is, we've had some conversations about the membership and like sort of confirmed that this makes sense with the rest of the committee. The thought was to add potentially two people, maybe next month or two. One would be someone with more of an architectural background, which we think would be supplement. The other idea was to add a parent lead meeting in one of the preschool districts that potentially has children that would be part of the new building. Do you agree with us? So just for the public, if anyone's watching from home, feel free to reach out to me if you are interested in going to the school building committee. The other one is a motion to add Chris Coleman. As we know, Mike Gillette retired after many years of service. Chris Coleman is our new town administrator. So just a motion to add him to the school building committee.
Can I just ask you about the parents that you're adding to the building committee? Will maybe some type of this process or maybe an application or something?
No, I think it's, you know, I think they're interested, they can reach out to me here, Emily. We're not going to do a hip-a-hy, you know, make a motion. Do I have a motion, so motion to add Chris Coleman to the school building committee?
Someone, second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? All right, yeah.
You need a motion to remove Mike, right? He's retired, so I'm assuming. Well, I don't know. I mean, I, I mean, not going to have. I think we'll just remove him, so.
Finally, the approved date trip for high school juniors to Washington.
Yeah, it's great. It's an opportunity. So this is something organized by our new faculty director, Latifah Frank. And she is proposing a trip to the 18th Annual Historically Black Colleges and Universities Festival, which is sort of a big recruitment event for kids. And so the details of the trip are here, but basically it would be a one-day trip where they fly down to DC and attend the event and come back.
where they fly down to DC and attend the event and come back. And the cost of the trip will be covered by, um, some grant funding that we received actually last year from...
They could need it back. Um, do I have a motion to accept? Uh, second. Um, any discussion? All those in favor? And then... So we have to adjourn and then?
We have to adjourn here and then re adjourn.
Adjourn, okay.
Second.
All those in favor? All right, great. Uh, we got one minute.